Meeting on this 13th day of May 2020. We'll start off with roll call, so please Karen.
Commissioner Krieger. Oh. Commissioner Krieger.
I'm here.
Commissioner Halleck.
Here.
Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Hayworth.
Present.
Chairman Donaldson.
Here. Okay, we'll start off with the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the March 11th meeting?
I move that we accept them as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is accepted. Next is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. And the time limit is limited to three minutes per speaker. So for the public, if you would like to make public comment, if you look at the bottom part of your screen and the participant icon, you can go in there and it has an option to raise your hand. So I'll give a few minutes to allow anybody that would like to make a comment to go ahead and do that, and then we'll move forward. Okay. I see none. So we'll move on to reports. The building activity report for March and April. Any issues, comments from the commissioners?
Karen, I have a question about Mr. Rosner's addition. It says refer to building official. Is that a plan check or what is that?
I referred that his building permit issues to Joe Hedley, the building official.
Is there?
So because he hasn't responded to the letters that we've sent him.
Okay.
In order to get an inspection every six months.
Got you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is it, I noticed it was getting smaller. Is that just because of people aren't doing anything right now? Or is it just, we're just finally getting caught up and getting stuff off the?
No, it really, I think next month and the month after that, it's going to be a lot bigger because.
Going to pop back up? Okay. I was curious, it just seemed like it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it is small.
And when you have quite a few roofing projects there, I think I saw at least six of them.
Yeah. Next, next.
Having just got rid of. Yeah, having just got rid of the rainy season, a lot of re-roofs.
Okay, if no other comments, we'll move on to old business, which we have none. And next move on to new business. And our first item there is the swearing in of our new planning commissioner Denise Wood. And what I'm going to ask Denise to do is raise her hand and I'll administer the oath. And a lot of times people think that's maybe a little bit awkward, but even before the shelter in place went into effect, it wasn't that quite that uncommon for people to be sworn in either over the phone or some sort of video meeting. So it does happen, and so that's how we're going to do it today. So I'll ask Denise to raise your hand and repeat after me. I Denise Wood do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I Denise Wood do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution to the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will bear, all right. And I will take the obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, thank you. You're officially sworn in. Commissioner Wood.
Thank you.
If you get a chance and see Denise out there, please congratulate her. It's great to have you here and great to have you on the commission. Mr. Krieger, was there, oh, that was your applause that I see up there in the, okay. Our next item is our annual progress report for the general plan update. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager Dino Peck.
Oh, he's muted.
I don't make it short.
There you go.
Got him.
Okay.
I completes my report. Any questions?
No.
Thank you Chair. Commissioners, the report before you is, is the annual progress report required by state law on the city's general plan. We, we have not done these as regularly as we, as we should in the past, and this year is, is a good effort and will hopefully set the standard for us going forward. What's attached to your staff report is the written APR, which is a little over two pages long and highlights primarily what we've done regarding the housing element, because that was the major work program item in the, in the city over the previous year. And then attached to that is what I found to be a very instructive matrix of each element of the general plan with notes in the far right column as to what, if anything, has been done in the, in the past year regarding the, the particular policy in each element. And rather than, rather than go, go into it specifically, I'll highlight it to say that there is a separate housing element, annual progress report that has already been completed and filed with the state. The general plan report, the one before you tonight, requires planning commission approval and recommendation to council, council decision to submit. And so that's what's going on here tonight. The action being requested from you is to, is to receive the report and recommend it for, for action by the city council for submission to the state by the council. As I said before, the, the main thing we focused on is the housing element in the last 12 months, and, and we got a terrific amount of work done. A, a, what I would characterize as a, a robust and contemporary housing element that holds true to who we are as a city, but also brings us into compliance with state law in a, in a range of topics, which is a very important set of topics with the, with the state legislature and the state governor, as, as you all know. There are other, other elements in, obviously in the, in the general plan that, that have the comments made there. Other than answering your questions tonight, which I'm happy to do, my goal tonight is to receive comment from the commission and from the public with regard to anything we might have missed that should be added to the report so that when we take it to the council, it has the benefit of your comments and the, and that of the public. And so I'll stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you Dino. What I'd like to do is first allow the commissioners to provide any comments or ask any questions. And the way I'll do that is in the order we normally do within City Hall, where I'll start with Doug Burton and kind of work my way around to Gary, and then ultimately allow Denise to, to speak at the end. So I noticed that Doug, you're with us.
Hello, everybody.
Did you have any question or comments you'd like to make regarding the general plan?
I do not. Sorry, everybody, for being late. That's my, that's my one comment. I was technically challenged. Anyway, no, I do not have any questions for Dino.
Okay. And if you do, as we move along, Doug, just go, go ahead and feel free at the end to, to hop in there. So next I'll go with Commissioner Jack Shaw. Any questions or comments?
Nope. It all looks good and confusing as ever.
Okay.
I shouldn't say confusing, just there's a lot there and looks good to me.
All right. Commissioner Hayworth.
Um, I just have, Dino, I've had this level of service thing on the circulation element part. Can you explain those, those levels? There's LOS E and LOS D, and there's really no explanation of what all that means.
Not good.
Yeah, thanks. Look, I don't have them right in front of me.
Well, just in general.
But in general, the higher the letter, the better the level of service. The lower the letter in the alphabet, the worse the letter, the level of service. And, and just as an aside, the, the, the state is moving away from, from this criteria for, for transportation analysis to a vehicle miles traveled, something called VMT, which you may have seen or mentioned at your Planning Commissioners Academy, instead of level of service. And it gets to a more holistic look at, at the volume of traffic traveling on the streets by, by distance, and, and ties more closely to trying to minimize that distance for a variety of reasons, one of which being the traffic congestion, but also obviously environmental reasons as well. But that, that isn't yet reflected in, in our general plan. It's coming.
But I mean, I mean, a lot of this stuff is really good. I mean, I'm really glad to see the discuss, the notes in the discussion and notes area about what's being done and how we're looking at all of this stuff, especially with regard to parking. Yeah, I guess that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll move on to Commissioner Halleck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I still visible and audible?
You're audible, but not visual. If you go down the left-hand corner and start video, then we'll be able to see you.
Making constant attempts, having some technical difficulties, I'll just go verbal. Just a great thanks to city staff and Denise Duffy and Associates again for compiling our annual progress report. That was really the only thing that jumped out at me also was the language used for a level of service versus vehicle miles traveled. My understanding that that's to be firmly the norm come 2020, so very soon to be. Otherwise, a very thorough report duly noted. No questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Halleck. I'll move on to Commissioner Krieger.
All right. You know me, so if, my, my internet is a little sketchy, so if I drop off, please just go to the next, and I'll come back, but it's totally steady for right now. Thanks for the report, lots of, I really enjoyed actually reading through here to answer some questions, brought up some other questions. And I'd just like to run through here and, and Dino, if I could, and have you just help me, you know, learn more about what's going on here. That's, this is really, really, I thought a great way to get a better feel for what's going on in the city. And so start here, paragraph two in the, in the report itself, background, it, towards the bottom of the first paragraph, right before the housing element paragraph, it talks about how we were going to be in conformity with the Ford Order Use, Reuse Plan and Authority Act. Obviously, that's about to go away. Is there anything that's still binding on us? Are we just sort of just going to keep going with the letter of the law that's, that's in place? What exactly happens? What's that process, I guess?
Gary, that's a great question, and I'll give, I'll try to be brief. And let me also preface this. This, this is a great opportunity to learn about our general plan. I know I have, just reading this and asking questions of Denise myself. We'll do some of that tonight. I think we can all look at this also as a, as a, as having another opportunity to do this at city council. So just think about this as, as two opportunities to, to, to dig into this document. In, in answer to your question, Gary, the, there is a lot of discussion around what will bind cities, but land use jurisdictions after FORA sunset on June 30th. There are things that we generally are, are, are all agreed on, and, and there are things that we are less agreed on jurisdictions. An example of what we are very agreed on is, is that the deeds for the properties that were transferred to the cities carry with them covenants and restrictions in them. And those, those include water allocations, they include use restrictions, they include language about munitions and, and explosives and, and, and other requirements. That's a fairly agreed upon continuation of, of elements of the FORA Act and, and some of the, the requirements from the base reuse plan and, and agreements from the Army to FORA to the land use jurisdiction. It will flow through the deeds. The base reuse plan as a, as a document as a whole and its application to, to the cities is much more, is, is not agreed upon by jurisdictions. And there are jurisdictions that would, would like nothing more than to just have no requirement to adhere to it. Other jurisdictions that, that see it as valuable, and it, it relates to environmental review, and so it's a very, it's, it's not a, a simple answer to you on, on what, what will and won't prevail after June 30th. And frankly, I think it's going to end up getting tested as different jurisdictions try to do different things with those, with those lands.
Okay, so we're, if I, if I'm hearing you right, then basically we're sort of not 100% sure exactly how it impacts us. It's, as we navigate forward, we'll, we'll learn more. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Fair, that's a fair summary.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, on the, on the next page, the adopted housing element right above 3.0, it says in there, working on a work program to implement. Is that just a process? Is that something we're trying to do ourselves, or is that something we're getting from someone else, or?
I'm sorry, Gary, where are you?
Yeah, right above the house, the adopted housing element paragraph, right above 3.0, the last sentence, it talks about the city is working on a work program to implement the housing element. Is that a work program, is that something we're creating ourselves, or is that, is something our contractors are helping us with? What, I was just curious what that was.
It's, it's something that we were working with Denise Duffy and Associates and, and Chair Donaldson, and to, to determine what elements of the house, the newly adopted housing element, we want to, we want to take action on first. That conversation's also going to, well, it's already been discussed to some degree during this council strategic planning retreat. It'll also be part of our budget discussions in terms of what we want to budget for, for next year by the council. And it will likely include elements of an ADU ordinance, the zoning ordinance update, an emergency shelter overlay, and potentially other elements.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, so now at the bottom of that page, the very last sentence, I was reading along and I saw the overall concepts of the planning policies, okay, blah, blah, are compatible with the vision and quality like values. And my first thought was, who, when did we decide what the, the values and the, the vision was? And then I turned the next page and I saw the last thing, other actions. The city council also conducted a public meeting in 30, City of Del Rio's vision for 2020, and I was just kind of curious what that was, because I'm pretty good about making most meetings. It occurred to me, is, is that the council strategic planning meeting? Is that what that is?
Yes.
All right, well, I, I would just make a, a comment that that's not a particularly public meeting since it's held at eight o'clock in the morning on a weekday. If we really want to get a vision, and I think it's a great idea, because we haven't done one for what, 13, 14 years, I think it'd be a great idea, but, you know, eight o'clock to four o'clock on a work, on a weekday, you know, that's, I, I think that's a pretty limited public meeting. I, I would encourage us to try and, we really want to get the pulse of the, the, the city, you know, that last one, 13, 14 years ago. I had just been here a couple of years and that one happened, and so I really wasn't in any position really to, to be much of a participant in it, having just moved to the city. But I would say it's probably time to start pulsing that again. So I would just encourage us to maybe do something a little more accessible. Okay, on the, on L4, I would just point out, it says here, the, the city shall work with the airport district to ensure the airport district does not compete, does not compete with the city's market. I, I would just point out, and I don't know if we want to note it in here, but that's exactly what they put in their master plan, their long-range master plan, was they want to build that road, north side road, so they could develop and put in light industrial and, and everything else up there on the north side of the airport, which would seem to be directly in competition with us. So I don't know, just something to think about, because that, what's in their long-range master plan is definitely in contradiction with, in contradiction with L4, because that's, that would be in direct competition with the city. And in L5, I was just curious, it says the airport should not expand its present aviation operation, because I'll just ask, I don't know if someone else is going to, we'll ask before or we'll ask later, but was that before or after the flight school? Because I would say a lot of people would, would argue that the flight school has been a, a fairly large expansion of their operations. Do you know if that was, is that before or after, Dino? Now, okay, I was just curious. Yes, okay, I would, I would just, again, these are just sort of notes. I'm not saying we need to change anything, it's just comments I'm throwing at cue to maybe think about, as I, stuff I thought about as I read through here. Then we went over to L15, and that's actually kind of tied back into the first one. L15, it talks about public meetings, participation with the residents. Again, you know, the last one, last one I remember was back 13, 14 years ago. The, it'd be nice to maybe have something updated, because the city's changed considerably since that time. L16, I just like to mention, that was good. We want to encourage our participation and just a shout out to the mayor for all the committees and all the people who are getting involved. If you haven't seen all the artwork around, especially the art committee, if you haven't seen the, the chalk, all the chalk art that's popping up everywhere, it's very cool. And so that's a really nice thing. Okay. Over, skip all the way over to, in the public service element, S6. Again, S6 is fairly straightforward, something with the engineered drainage plans for all development projects. And then it talks about S6A. I would just, if we're talking about drainage, I would just keep it on the airport. That's, all the Kona meetings I've ever been at were, were people from Kona over there. That was one of their big complaints, was the airport did not adequately plan for, and they had a lot of problems with flooding in Kona and did not have, it did not sound, listening to the Kona residents, did not sound like they had a lot of good resolution with the airport on that. So, and obviously, our situation for the people from Rosita and Paloma and that area was, they're in a lot worse shape than the people in, they're a lot more vulnerable than people in Kona. So as they start to do work up there, it's just something that we probably want to keep an eye on. In the attachment A, let's see, and O6 dash five C, it talks about the conservation area annexed from the former Ford Ward and working with the Ford Ward Habitat Working Group, that's down in COS5E, so C and E. I was just wondering, do we have any update on the Habitat Working Group? What's the latest on that? It sounds like it's sort of just for themselves. Is that kind of where we, we're at now with that?
Yeah, no, Gary, it's a great question. So the, the Habitat Working Group held its last meeting, and with the outcome was that the, the endowment funds collected from the CFD from FORA would be dispersed to the land use jurisdictions based on a formula that was agreed to during that meeting. It looks like the City of Del Rio's is going to probably receive somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000 from that fund. And HMP, the Habitat Management Plan, will endure, it will continue to be in place, and that any work on an HCP other beyond the certification of the, of the EIR, EIS that Denise Duffy is working to complete, anything beyond that in terms of its implementation and structure for, for that implementation will be left up to jurisdictions to get together and figure out. It's not something FORA is going to.
So is that money just going to go into escrow account somewhere and just set for, or do we have a plan for it? I just.
That's a great question. So what, one of the, one of the four agreements coming to city council on May 26th will be, it's an oddly named agreement, because it just doesn't reflect what, you know, doesn't have habitat in it at all.
Right.
Community facilities agreement. And that agreement will be the basis, if council approves it and FORA approves it, it'll be the basis for the, the passing of that $750,000 with instructions to, to the city.
Okay.
And the instructions are, as I've seen them, are fairly broad.
Okay.
Habitat-related expenditures, which could be.
All right.
Work, could be work we do to maintain the, the, the open areas, so, but it'll be.
We got a little bit of, we have a little cushion to help us get through some of the work at least.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. That's, that's really good. Okay. Yeah, actually, on the next page, on COS9, that's where I actually meant to talk about the runoff at the airport. It says the, the city will work closely with the surrounding jurisdictions to maintain safe conditions and preventing candle erosion. Yeah, I, I would just, again, I, just something for us to really, as a city, to really be, I think, watchful for, make sure they, they're, yeah, just something for us to watch, because it, I, I've been to enough of those Kona meetings and listened to them, they sound like they really did not have, they had some real problems there. Okay, very quickly then, over on, in noise, and again, just because I'll ask, because I know it's going to come up. In, in one, the, the city works closely with the airport to ensure residents are protected from noise. And I guess from the coffees, we've had a few coffees where it's come up, it sounds like basically we don't really have much to do with that. I mean, not much control over it. They seem to be doing what they're doing. It does say down below in number two, though, that the airport has a noise monitoring system. Do you know, is that something we could get readouts from? Is there, are they actually recording decibels up there somewhere? Is that something we could get our hands on, or would they share it, or would they, would they even admit they have it?
Yeah.
I mean, it says here they have, it says here they have a noise monitoring system. I'm thinking, well dang, if they got a noise monitoring system, I'd love to see those, I'd love to see those numbers.
Yeah.
But not that we can do anything.
I suspect if they get readouts from that, it's probably a public document, so you could, you could ask.
Have you seen their, have you seen their website? Yeah, good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, no, it's, it's very, yeah, it's not user-friendly is a nice way of putting it. Okay, and then just last, I'll finish up here real quick, just more of the noise stuff. In four, in five, it says the city works, you know, to ensure the noise attenuation measures are met, and I was like, it sounds like that's kind of really just fallen by the wayside. And I guess maybe, maybe we could start, just something to think about. I don't know what kind of expense it's involved. Maybe we at some point could put up some sort of system and we could start monitoring it ourselves, just a thought, because I know it's, obviously it's an issue, and I know, I know citizens report it. I know there's, I've seen, I've seen the Nextdoor posts, I've seen the other stuff. People report it, they go, they go online and they fill out the forms, and they report the noise to the airport all the time and nothing ever happens. So anyway, okay, other than that, though, but it really was, I, I really enjoyed reading it. I mean, I learned a lot, and it was, it was really a good way to kind of get a, a good pulse of what's. it was really a good way to kind of get a good pulse of what's what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Krieger. So I'll move on to Commissioner Wood.
Hello. All right, I had a question. I noticed there was some undergrounding with PG&E funds. Just wondering if that's going to happen in my lifetime.
That is a great question. The the amount we have in our account, last I checked, was a little under $200,000.
Oh, maybe not.
So won't, won't do much more than about a block.
Even do a block?
Yeah, so that's, our challenge is financial strictly, it's not it's financial.
Okay. Can we start up at the top of Delray Oaks here at Rosita? Start at the top and work down.
Oh.
You're working on the views yet. Thank you, George. That's very considerate.
Thank you.
And then I just noticed some, I think misinformation in here on page eight and C O S four, and there's a reference that the city of Monterey maintains the vegetation of the Frog Pond. And I think that's Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District.
That's correct. That's a great.
So that, I would choose that. And then, thanks Gary, about the four doored Habitat Working Group. I was curious, who is that? Just, I'm sorry, I'm not up to speed on all this.
No, that's okay. It was a combination of the FORA Board of Directors. So, you know, the electeds from the county and the jurisdictions, combined with the administrative committee, which is generally city managers and representatives from the county and and institutions of higher learning. Those group, that, those two groups together formed the Habitat Working Group.
And I think that is all I have, so.
Okay, thanks Denise, and what I'll do now is go back to Commissioner Burton if you had any comments.
Yes, thank you, thank you for coming back to me. I just took a couple of things for the city manager and on the on the general plan here. In no particular order, but maybe in order of importance. I realize that at one point we did a SWAC, right, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges analysis for the city. And and I know that that SWAC was used to inform the pieces of the general plan. It's, I mean, that's kind of how you do it. If you're in the military, that's what you do. You look at your own strengths, weaknesses, and look for opportunities and challenge. And so with the assumption that that all of these sixty six items connect to our SWAC, S W O C, if it connects to that, I for one am wondering why we don't see a connection to more connections to the city's priorities, I think maybe is the is the best word, because a SWAC, Dino, to me would turn into something like listing of things that we want to do, which is what we have here. And then a prioritization of that. So my question, my first question is about sixty six items, if they're all important, in general, you end up with nothing that's important, and I'm wondering about priorities for the city.
Yeah, that's a great question, Doug. So the the general plan, as you know, is is a document that really looks out decades and sort of guides and shapes the the city over time. And as we've talked about with the housing element, the housing element has received a fairly recent update. And that that update is is driving work program for the planning commission and staff as we look forward to what our priorities need to be from a, from the housing element perspective. And then we're taking out those those priority items and working them into into the work program. And I mentioned just three quick ones, and that is an ADU ordinance, a zoning ordinance update, and an emergency overlay, shelter overlay ordinance. The other, the other elements of our general plan have have not been updated in the same way we've done a housing element, nor are they necessarily required to be the way the housing element is by statute. And so teasing out the the priorities from from those elements is really doesn't occur in the in the structured way that the housing element processes happen. It happens more within the strategic planning retreats done every six months with the city council where where a SWAT is done, a bottom to, you know, top SWAT analysis is done. What what we don't do, and I suspect most cities don't very well, is necessarily take that iterative SWAT and prioritization and tie it back holistically to the the general plan, which I think is the point you're you're getting at. And so that's how we are, we have been working with it. And and if it's the council's pleasure to to modify that, or frankly, the planning commission's pleasure to to guide staff on on changing that, I'm happy to to be part of that.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Dino. And I'm sorry, you probably covered that in the part where I was still trying to connect to the to our team here, so I apologize for that. The next, next two little pieces that are not, to me, they're not little about sixty six items. And that would be, no matter what you do, and I think I've probably said this before, it requires resources. At a minimum, it takes the city manager to think about it. Well, it's a resource, you know, for the city, and a very good resource as well. So we need to make sure that we tie resources and what we think is going to be required for some of these ideas or priorities. So from me, I'm wondering if there's to include, like, the necessary resources to do some of these things. I'm going to apply resources to the plan, thinking through it.
Yeah, that's, that's another great, another great question, and you're clearly thinking in terms of strategic planning, and I love it. I think that that what what I liked about reading this general plan is, it's a good general, it's a good set of policies that, you know, the city's forefathers and foremothers wrote, right? I mean, this was a, this was a document written twenty five, thirty years ago, and it it actually stands up pretty well today. And and so it has it has guided the city over over time. Resources have been a perennial issue for the city. And of late, we have more resources than we've ever had. And that's why we're able to update the housing element, that's why we're updating ordinances and and doing other work in terms of infrastructure. But on the planning side, we're doing more planning now, I think, than perhaps any time in the, in at least recent history of the city. But it's a terrific question. Are we, are we, are we resourced to do everything in the plan? Absolutely not. It's, we're just not. And so what the council prioritizes and what the commission prioritizes as as our work is where is where we focus.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we have to, we have to do that, that's and I agree with you about, we need to think through those. My last two pieces, and I'll just lump them together. I also am a firm believer that once you set priorities, you got to have target dates for completion and those that are responsible to get it done. Like attaching someone or an entity or a group to getting things done, and I like to set dates. And I know it's uncomfortable to do that, but is there any, any, and this goes right, this is hand in hand with resources. What resources are going to be consumed? What are the target dates for finishing and who's responsible to get it done? So that's, I'll just leave that with you as a question in general, perhaps you have some thoughts about target dates and who's responsible.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to address that. The the general plan does not contain that level of specificity. Where we get that, where staff gets that level of specificity, and it is that level of specificity, it's it's who and by when, is is in our twice annually strategic planning retreats where the council determines the the work program for staff and specifically identifies a responsible agent, it's generally me, and that's fine. And and then sets dates for at least progress reports, if not final accomplishments. Part of, one of our objectives in the in the strategic planning is 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 the development of of the city, and that's where most of the planning work program items have fallen. Where council has told us to work on the housing element is the, probably the best example. And so that's, that's our general structure for for doing what what it is you you described.
Thank you very much, and for the entire team there. That's all I've got.
Whatever Doug said I agree with. Thanks for the staff. And we're doing all the work. There's a lot of work. I mentioned that it was complicated, and that was a bad bad word for it. It's just an awful lot there, and I appreciate all the work that went into it from you, Dino, and the rest of the staff.
Thanks, George.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I would like to add to this discussion is that the general plan is critical because it provides that implementing guidance, but just as important, or maybe even more important than that, is the citizen input feedback that basically brings that general plan to an action and an end result. And we've got a lot of things that we're going to be looking at here shortly, whether it's the four tag trail or the items that we've discussed within the housing element. And I'll just tell you to address Commissioner Krieger's potential concerns about getting citizen input. I I plan on putting those items on the agenda as early as I can, because I think that's a good thing. I think it's good that the citizens have input and can provide their vision upfront so that as we work through it, we can provide the council with a good product that's already been somewhat vetted by our citizens and been shaped by our citizens. One of the first things that we have coming up is the four tag trail. That's one item that I plan on getting on the agenda as soon as I can. And if you look at page five, you'll see items C ten through C fifteen kind of talk about implementing guidance for four tags. It talks about diverse transportation networks, the need to reduce motor vehicle trips, and the connectivity between pedestrian and bicycle networks with residential and commercial type properties. So that's going to be a critical piece as we go into the design phase of that four tag trail. Those are the items that we're going to use to help shape exactly what we want in the city, and you marry that with the comments we're going to get from our citizens, and I think we're going to come up with a pretty good product. And I I see that we'll continue to do that when we address the items on the, within the housing element as well, whether that be that four door or any available properties that we have within city limits in order to get us to our affordability numbers and just to make sure that we do it right. One thing I just wanted to point out for those of you that are listening to the meeting, you always hear about the airport road being part of our general plan. Well, if you look at item C seventeen, you can see that it's right there. I think it was put in there in nineteen eighty eight. And even though big hair and parachute pants have gone to the wayside since that time, that part of the general plan has stood tall and weathered, weathered the test of time. The the other thing that I wanted to kind of point out, you've heard me before talk about seventeen acres and the portions of seventeen acres that should be held as green space and open area. And if you look at page nine, you'll see at item C slash O S dash ten, it talks about areas that are subject to flooding and high sloping areas, which is exactly the the type of area that I describe out of seventeen acre product, seventeen acres area. And it can, it's about twelve to thirteen acres that comprises that type of terrain. And it just says in there that it should be generally kept free from development. The other thing I wanted to point out, and Commissioner Krieger brought it up as well, is the noise piece on page eleven, item N four. Within there, it gives that baseline for noise, talks about sixty five decibels externally and forty five decibels internally. That is our baseline. So in other words, with any type of project we have out there, if that baseline is exceeded, then the the developer has to come back with ways that they're going to negate or mitigate that particular noise level. So that's, that's where that's addressed in there. And that absolutely will be done during the EIR phase of development, wherever that might be. And that is the baseline level that will hold them too. So those were just a couple of the things that I wanted to mention. And with that, what I'd like to do is take it out to the public. If there are any questions, please raise your hand within the system and you can provide your comments. There anybody out there? Okay, Kim Shirley. Let me unmute you.
I was hoping.
You got the floor.
All right, so thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. I have, you know, I have some nitpicky things with this, if, I hope that's okay. Because I feel like, I know this is a document that will go to city council, and you said last night that this will eventually go to the state as well.
Right.
And am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess I just want to make sure that the comments on attachment A are accurate, because I feel like this is a point in time, this is part of our history, and I want to make sure that it's, what we're sending them is is accurate. So I'll start with policy number, and, you know, policy number, just this is a broad statement, all the ones that deal with the airport. You say the city works closely with the Monterey Peninsula Airport District, so that's in L three, L four, L five. And I, I guess I want some clarification on that, because I'm not feeling like there's a really close connection, maybe there was prior. So I don't know what the wording should be. I'm sorry?
They won't return my calls?
So, yeah, I guess that's, it's more of a comment. I just feel like, you know, is that truly honest? And also in L five, there was a sentence I wasn't understanding. It says, the city is diligent to work with the district on expansion plans, but not in areas that would affect the city. That didn't seem to make sense to me. It seems like you'd want to work on something that would affect the city.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Kim. I I have edits that I'm going to make to to a couple of these. Because I'm, I'm frankly, I share your concern and your discomfort with the characterization of our level of coordination with them.
Okay.
And and so I'm a hundred percent accept that. And so.
Okay.
Let's keep going, but a hundred percent on board with you.
All right, sounds good. Let's go to L fifteen on page two. And there's a word that's, it needs to be a different word, where it says a primary goal of the city is to facility. I think it means to facilitate
Yeah.
community input. Let's see. On page seven, P S one, I was hoping, I was, the statement was a little off for me where it says, and this is in the discussion and notes, where it says maintenance of parks is a serious budget item. What is it, is serious meaning that it it's a large budget item? I didn't know what the word serious meant in that context.
Yeah, I think that the intent of this is to say that it it costs us to maintain our our parks. But that could certainly be written more.
That could just be more clear in some ways, so you can just make a little note.
Sure.
In same page, C/OS-1, where it says, "In addition," this is the second sentence, where it says, "In addition, the city is holding a vacant 17 acre parcel as open space to protect the parcels." Now, I know it's not zoned as open space. I know Commissioner Donaldson mentioned that. So is it appropriate to say that we're holding it as open space even though it's not zoned in that manner?
I think it's more accurate to say that it is currently open space. And so I'll specify the zoning of that parcel in there--
Okay.
--but it's more clear.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be great. Okay, on to page eight. This is just something that stood out to me in C/OS-4, talking about the riparian vegetation. It says, "The city is committed to maintaining native vegetation. There's not much riparian vegetation in the city, and we have an entire creek that runs through our whole city." So I just, I thought that was a weird characterization. I'd like to be able to be proud of the creek that runs through the city and say that we do have some, certainly some riparian vegetation that runs through there. Also in C/OS-5D, it mentions 17 acres again. Again, conserving, it is open space, so it's another spot where that can, you can put in the zoning there. And then similar to Commissioner Krieger talking about the noise, and again, I think we really need to make sure that if we say we're working closely with the airport in terms of noise, and Ken might mention this, but we were at the airport meeting today, and that's another thing that says in here that says you attend the airport board meetings, and I'm not sure if I've ever seen you there, Dino, but we go to a lot of the meetings. And it sounds like they're actually looking at raising the height of some of those flight school airplanes so that it could relieve some of the noise for our town. So I think that's something that maybe you could reach out on or form a connection on, so just throwing that out there. And then the last one on page 11N-6, the last sentence, or I guess the only sentence, "City works closely with the airport to ensure noise attenuation measures are met. In addition, the airport is small, therefore, different types of aircraft, such as larger jets, cannot be supported on the runways." And it's really not the larger jets that are the issues, it's really the small, the general aviation planes. So I just want to point that out. All right, that's it for me.
Hey, Kim, on the noise thing--
Yeah.
I absolutely welcome your efforts and Ken's and others at attending the board, interacting with the airport staff as well as the electeds. I have been to airport board meetings, it's been quite some time since I have been, but I have been in the past. You know, let's make this a collaborative effort, because God knows, we don't have the staff to be at all the meetings we need to be at to kind of keep a pulse on this, and what you're doing is a huge help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Appreciate it, great input. Anyone else out there from the public? Okay, I see two more. So Karen, Karen Harris. Let me unmute you, or Karen, can you do that?
Hi, Chair Donaldson.
Okay, we got you. Please, Karen, go ahead.
I'm really grateful to be able to share, be a part of this process. Looks like they're checking the boxes sometimes. I know it's a big--
Karen, we're having a tough time hearing you. It sounds like something's in front of your microphone. It's just not clear enough to hear what you're saying.
Okay, I don't know what else to do.
That seems a little bit better.
Okay. I wanted to express that I'm grateful to the-- to allow us to share our opinions and put this out in the open. Can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, good. One of my points I wanted to make is very general, is many of the comments in the review were addressing, didn't actually address the development at the Fort Worth properties. And it, many of the comments just said, "Well, there's no development going on, so we don't have to deal with it." Well, we are going to have to deal with it, because it's going to happen, and it's going, this document's going to live with us for a few more years and guide us into the future. So I think that's important for us to look at how we talk about the housing, zoning, the corridors, the connections of the community, traffic, all those concerns that were kind of, it seemed like they were like minimized in the comments. I hate to say it like that, but that's what it felt like.
Okay, Karen, thank you so much for your comments. I'll just say that for any development project that the city will see coming down our way, either in the near term or long term, I can assure you that within the planning commission, I will get that on the agenda with as much time as possible, where we can get maximum input from you and any other citizen that either wants to see something or has ideas or any type of comment that would make the project better. I definitely plan on doing that, so you'll have that opportunity. And really, the general plan is just a tool that we can use that provides that implementing guidance as we're going through and receiving that feedback and following that guidance. So I'm sorry if it felt like that was minimized for you, but I can guarantee you that those opportunities to provide a voice and to provide feedback will be there. Okay, anyone else out in the public that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, I will move on to the next item, which is announcements and comments made by our planning commissioners. Are there any announcements? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I move on, what we need to do is, I need to have a motion to approve or recommend the APR be submitted to the city council on May 26, 2020, to be considered during their meeting. Do I have a motion?
Chairman?
A second?
No, 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 Chairman, I'm sorry, I have a question, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm just curious, is there a, is there a timing element on this, Dino? I mean, in other words, do we, is there a time, some deadline we need to meet? Send this, or is there possible for us to just have it come back and take a look at the changes that we make and then send it to the council?
It's a great question. We are, there is not a hard and fast time because of the pandemic. There was a time, and it has come and gone, and they've kind of extended it out for us, and so we're in decent shape. My recommendation to you all would be to recommend this to council and give staff the opportunity, which we're going to take, to revise it and update it based on all of your comments tonight, and those of the public, and bring it to the council. The council has to approve it. If it hasn't met with your particular changes by that time, that's an opportunity to speak at council, it's an opportunity to have it further amended at the dais. What I would encourage us to do is, this is a, it's an important document, it does become part of the record, so I don't want to trivialize it, but it is an annual report.
Right. No, I get it, and I guess then what I would say is, you know, I was thinking a little about the signed ordinance, because there was considerable time spent at council. You know, maybe we could have taken a second look at that one, maybe saved the council some time.
Yeah, that's a law, this is a report.
Right, no, I know, I get it, I get it. But, okay, maybe, just a suggestion, maybe, is if you can send a, along with to the council in the briefing notes, you send them beforehand, just maybe a synopsis of the comments you received tonight, so that they not only see the document that we're going to send to them, that you're going to revise and give them to vote on, but they could also, you see, not, you know, not a full transcript maybe, but just maybe a highlights of some of the comments tonight, so they get a sense of what was brought up here as well as what's in front of them in the document. Might use to help them with context, that's all.
Yeah, no, very, absolutely. And the good news is, I think we are recording this, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
We are.
Well, if they, if they go, if they all go watch, I just thought you might make it easy for them, but--
Yeah, well, we'll do, we'll do the best we can--
Okay, well, you understand what I'm saying, right?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. Can we pass this?
Before you do that, George, just to address some of those concerns, I think the way we can do it, where everybody will be able to do what was just described, is eliminate the timeframe on there. Instead of saying that it needs to be at the next city council meeting, just recommend that we submit that APR to city council without a time deadline. That allows staff to do what they need to do, and it also takes into account the situation we're living under with the shelter in place. So does that sound like it might be helpful?
Well, that's pretty much what I was going to make the motion, that we pass this on to council with some of the clarifications added into that, and so staff can address some of that before it goes on to the state.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to recommend the APR be submitted to city council, but allow staff to make revisions and take into account the comments made during this meeting.
Correct.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion passed. Okay, now I'll move on to announcements and comments by the planning commissioners. Are there any items or any comments the commissioner would like to make?
I'd like to just say, with some of the comments about the airport, I appreciate our citizens going to meetings, but I find it sort of funny that we have signs all over the city saying, "No road, no road," and then we want them to work with us. I can see where they might not want to return any phone calls after we, you know, get pretty hard on them, so we have to have to work with them, and sometimes we have to bend a little. That's all.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the next item, which is, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, June 10, at 6 o'clock, and most likely it'll be in the same type of format that you see here. But with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.